First off, we have Brian from AMCO. He's the one that helped us refinance bonds and the loans. And he's gonna kinda take some questions and answers and tell you how it all went and how well we did.
Welcome.
Thank you. First, Mayor Larson and council members, thank you for inviting me to your town. It's my first time here and it's a beautiful town. So I really enjoyed being able to drive around and explore a little bit before the meeting. And you have a great town. So that, I just wanted to follow up. Obviously, everything that we've done is kinda done, you know, so... But I did wanna follow up and answer maybe any questions that you had or just kinda recap, you know, what we did, you know, obviously, is we did refinance three of the USDA loans that the city had outstanding with regard to water. We still do have one USDA note outstanding in actually... Is there another one in process? No, it's an SRF that you have in process, sorry. One other one that's... The reason we didn't do that one is because it is backed by your sewer revenues and there might be some state funds that are available. But I have business with Lonny. If those don't become available, it wouldn't take much to do something similar than we did with this one. Regarding the three that we refinanced, as you might be aware, you know, interest rates have been at historical lows. They've kinda fallen again due to...
The world.
Trade war, yeah, I mean, the trade war, you know, different things that are going on domestically. So it was a great time and we've probably done this with 100 so communities, you know, throughout South Dakota and North Dakota and, you know, and I have to admit, you know, I give Lonny a lot of credit for, you know, a lot of times we get a lot of like, who are you and why are you calling me? And yeah, okay, thanks a lot. Well, and, you know, we really, this did really happen. And so I, you know, I think a lot of people think it's, you know, we're just calling and trying to sell the bill of goods type thing, but... And I think it helped with Courtney Dean involved, that, you know, Bond Council who we use, that you've worked with them with your SRF, different other issues. So I, probably it helped a little bit that way. I do compliment the city. You guys provide a lot of great information on your website. You know, I've worked with a lot of smaller communities, you know, your size even, you know, and even bigger that don't put as much good information on their website as you guys do. So I do compliment you on that. It made the process easier, although Lonny might disagree a little bit. You know, she'd send me something and I'd be like, well, could we send it this way? And, you know, but she was great to work with and have the information accessible. And what, at the end of the day, you know, the city ended up saving, will save, you know, by being able to keep the same payments. They will pay out the bonds earlier and essentially that'll equate to 2.2, almost 2.2 million dollars worth of payments to the city. So, and, you know, we always look at it as a percentage of the size of the bond to the savings. I will tell you, I've never seen that big a percentage. I think it was, you know, when we look at what they call this net present, it was over 25%, which I've never, I'd be honest, I've never done a bond for someone that has had that kind of savings before. So again, I, you know, I was pretty excited about it and I hope the city is as well. You know, from an interest rate standpoint, what you're looking at for an interest rate, a true interest rate standpoint for the remaining out to, I think, your final maturity is in 2039, you're at 2 point, basically 2.3%. It is kinda, the, the interest rates fluctuate over time, but all in all, it's 2.3% that you're gonna be paying for the remainder of the bonds, which is a really good rate. I guess I'll, I just wanted to kinda recap and answer any questions that maybe, you know, and we kinda put a lot of numbers in front of you that, you know, are a little bit different than what you see from like an SRF or different things like that. So I just wanted to, you know, one, thank you for the opportunity to work with you and two, maybe answer any questions that you might have as you looked at the numbers.
I think we need to thank you. You did, you did a good job for us and we appreciate it very much.
Well, I was gonna say, the other piece, nine bidders. I, I probably have only had one other bond issuance that I did. It was the Fargo Public Schools where I had nine bidders. So nine bids for the city of Red Lodge, that's pretty phenomenal. I mean, for a community of approximately, call it 2,500 people, that's, that's phenomenal. So.
Dave?
You mentioned that we're over 25% and it was one of the higher ones you've seen. Well, that's certainly good news and I don't disagree with that at all. The little gears in the back of my head going, does that mean A, we should've done this a whole lot sooner? B, what, what lessons have we learned that we can apply going forward beyond just getting this interest rate down to 2.3 now? What, what other lessons we have that will help us out financially?
Well, I, I think that's a great question. You know, as far as the timing of it is always, you know, what we saw when the financial crisis hit, you know, definitely if you looked at it at that time, would you have been maybe similar, you know, in the respect of, you know, it would've been bigger, but there would've been, it would've been longer. You know, you would've had more left outstanding. So, or, you know, as far as the term would've been longer from 2008, 2010, call it, you know, when the financial crisis was hitting. You know, as, as a financial or municipal advisor is what they call us now, and just again, one thing I think maybe, I don't know if Lonny touched on this, as a municipal advisor, we actually are required by federal law to be registered with the SEC and MSRB. So we're not just kinda out there, you know, not, we're being watched as anyone else is being watched and audited and things like that. So we have, we monitor, you know, now that we've worked with the city, we will help monitor opportunities that maybe come up. As far as, you know, the debt structure that the city has, they're pretty well positioned, you know, using state programs, which are low interest rate kinda subsidized through the state. So that is, you know, I'd say you're utilizing those programs well. Again, I would, the one I would just throw out is the remaining USDA. However, you know, if the state or if you guys contact me, that's the one I would think there's opportunity for the city to save some additional dollars. But as far as your existing debt out there, I definitely think you're well positioned. You know, I guess if down the road you're looking at other projects, you know, we can throw definitely some ideas and let you know what, where the rates are compared to, you know, other types of programs, you know, that might be out there. So I guess that's, you know, where we come in, you know, Lonny was to just email me and say, hey, if we were looking at this kind of project, then, you know, I know one, as I was doing my research on Red Lodge, like your pool, you know, if you were to say, okay, what are some options available for us to do our pool? And what, you know, if we needed, wanted to fund it all now and then pay for it over time, what can we do? So those are things that we, you know, and, you know, unfortunately, the other one is streets, you know. States never help with streets or there's never federal dollars for streets. Those are hard ones and, you know, trying to figure out what the best way to fund those over time are and pay for those. But we certainly can throw out some ideas. I, I hope that kinda answers. It's always a what if, you know, it depends kinda, you know, but, but right now, I would say the city's well positioned.
Have you found, I know one of the stipulations we had as we started to pursue this was that none of the loans got longer. So I think of like home loans, since I refinanced my house and my payment dropped down and that's, of course, it's still, it's 30 years from now before it's paid off.
Yep.
Have other municipalities have that same kind of restraint? Is that kinda normally how it's done or was that unusual and did that contribute to our getting the good 25% rate? Or do other people end up pushing out the end dates as they do it?
No, I mean, most of the time when we're, when we're doing these, one of the restrictions is that you can't extend the maturity, you know, and obviously, I shouldn't say can't, but it's unusual. Most cities aren't looking at doing that. A water district I'm working with right now, they're electing to take the savings annually as compared to trying to shorten, say, let's pay it off early. They want to take it annually, so it puts less constraint maybe on their water rates if they need to, or they're able to put a little bit more, you know, with water districts, they always have a lot of, they're always fixing frozen pipes, you know, as they have thousands of miles of pipe, you know, going to rural communities. So that's where, you know, either they take that type of scenario or they, they shorten it. Most cities will shorten it. I, I would say most cities did what you did and, and try and pay it off earlier.
Any other questions from the public? For example?
Well, you know, when you got good news, it usually goes that way.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you both for coming.
Which brings us to the next part.
Well, again, I do appreciate you inviting me and having, having me and so definitely we'll see each other.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks Lonny.
Preliminary capital improvement plan discussion. You wanna start on it, James?
Sure. Since the last time, since the last version was brought to the council, there was just four changes made. Hopefully, everybody has seen those. I wasn't at that meeting, so I had to talk to Jim about it and figure out what it was that was to be deleted. And I had a couple of things on page 14 for irrigation system, taking the cemetery out. We took the indoor recreation center out. And there was fixing the SID in the golf course to recognize that that was a SID project rather than a city project. So those changes have been made. The, my task was to have all the department heads look at it and I kinda neglected the fact that it'd be a good idea to have Parks Board look at it. They did not meet last week on the regularly scheduled meeting, so they're, they're gonna be meeting Thursday night instead and they're gonna take a look at it. They may have a couple of items that they would still like to add. Robin also has talked about the possibility of an anaerobic digester, which would basically turn sewage we do into an energy producing product. So that is potentially something else that could get added. But other than that, I think it's, it's well written and it's, we're about ready to, to move it forward for adoption. We should be able to get there before the end of the year, is my goal. So I thought it'd still be a good idea to have it on the agenda tonight and to have eyes look through it one more time, to have the public be able to give comments if they've looked at it and have anything, any concerns or questions that they may, they may have as well.
Jim, anything to add?
No, I think, I'm just passing away right now. The rating deal will do, you know, I have my idea, but I think the most important deal that they'd, the storm drain, storm waters, that would be at the top, so that's, rather than to the more farm around that, I think our thing is, is your ice.
Discussion at the table.
On the storm drain, Jim, the fourth or fifth neighbor said something about there might be a drain out, thinking that there's a drain on our corner, 14th and Flat. I, I should've let you know first, I went, I, I had some time to burn and I took a shovel over there and found it.
We went and cleaned it.
Pardon?
We went and cleaned it. We went and cleaned that drain out where they covered, pardon me?
Well, this, this was like, what my, my concern is, if, there was, there was close to 14 inches of dirt on top of it and it needs to get recessed back.
We're gonna raise, we're gonna raise that up out of the ground for it.
Oh, okay.
Drain stuff, we're gonna, we're gonna, we need to raise up, there are two pieces left.
Yeah.
And quarters.
Yeah, the one down on the next, down on Hagan wasn't as bad as this one as far as the, it's sitting down in there too.
So let's move back to the CIP.
Okay.
Dave?
James, you may have kind of pre-addressed one of my questions when you said you were gonna have all of the other department heads kind of look at and review. I presume that that would include modifying the first paragraph on page one. Right now, all it refers to is the city's Public Works Director and the city council, but at the same time, if you look at it, it has police, it has library, it has parks, which I presume is planning. So I, I would think that that would be expanded.
Yeah, we could definitely expand that. Obviously, Public Works is about 90% of the CIP, but all the department heads were given the chance for input, some didn't have any. About half the departments really don't have any capital expenditures. But it could be expanded, yes, you can note that.
The other comment that I would add, and I'll use page five as a reference, which is the water projects. So Jim, this isn't, this isn't picking on you, this is just knowing that you won't be available to answer questions when people read through this. If I look through the, the first couple of bullets, it talks about why these are important. So like it talks about the water project in Park Avenue has minimal cover to protect against freezing. Okay, that's a pretty good reason why it says why it's here. If I look at Canoe Avenue, it has a dead end issue and they experienced a loss of water because of fire hydrants. So those are both really good examples. But then if I go through and look at some of these others, there are things that may be readily evident to you, or I say that for the other departments, but may not necessarily be readily evident to citizens. So one of the examples that I received correspondence on, and I believe others did as well, was like talking about the police cars. That's not to say that we don't need them, but what was absent in this document was kind of an explanation for anybody on each of these items who wasn't sitting in front of the department head to say, why is this, this is important? And I think that would be something that would be good to expand on prior to, to calling this done, so that, that it's clear why, why these items have been selected. Does that make sense?
This guy did hear in time, Chief. His example he brought up was the purchase of the police cars in the CIP and he just wants a little more explanation on that, on why.
And, and just to be clear, you were, you were also ran Dawg. So we actually talked about the water because there were like two or three of them that had like really good examples, this is the why, this is the why, this is the why. And, and I said, and another one, and I mentioned that because we have received feedback on that one. And so it's, it's not necessarily an explanation for us here, it's a flushing out the document so that if anybody's reviewing it and isn't sitting in front of Jim or isn't sitting in front of you, they can have those questions answered.
Okay, I, I don't know that I fully understand the question either. Yes?
I think what he's saying is like every other area has like a justification narrative, why we need this.
Okay.
And so instead of just saying the police department needs blah, 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 it should have a paragraph in there kind of explaining why.
So, so just, just an example, just because I can do it in 30 seconds. On the water, like on the Park Avenue water, it says it has minimal coverage to protect against freezing. On the Canoe Avenue, it says, as a result of being a dead residence, experienced loss of water. Now, not all of them have it. So the, the next two or three, it talks about pressure reducing valves, but there's not really a why about why they need it. I mean, you know, it may be completely obvious if you're the department head, but to the citizens or an average person reading this or, so, so, you know, talking about water mains on Grant or Seven. So one of the pieces of feedback we got, and it wasn't specifically targeting you, that was just like I said, and also another bullet, is that people should be able to look at this document without having to feel a need to reach out to the department and say, and say, so why is it that important that we do the water on Park Avenue? It should be evident within the document.
I absolutely would be happy to, I'll put that, yeah, that's not an issue. I apologize, this is my first time putting it in, so I'll take the blame on that, but I absolutely have every reason to explain why we need new police cars and so, that's not an issue. A lot, a lot of people misunderstand, think that we're getting new police cars every three year, which is not the case. It's every six years that we get new police cars.
So, and, and yeah, and then like I said, it was not a, it was not a call out to you specifically, it was just, it was, the only reason I mentioned that one is because that was one specific one that we have received some, some feedback and questions on.
Is there anything else? I think there's some other things as far as also along with that, I think I also included maybe bathrooms?
Yeah, I, I, there's a public restrooms on there too. I, I just had a question mark myself, but we had.
Yeah, well, I can answer real quick and I wanted to do that. It's not really so much, for one thing, my officers don't have a way of cleaning up. We, we respond to some scenes which are, could be contaminants, whether it be a vehicle spill, whether it be chemical spills, or whether it be biohazard through bodily fluid. An officer needs the ability to clean up and change uniform and shower on, to clear up from those body hazards, rather than having them sit in it for a 12 hour shift. And so one of the things that I was thinking about with those bathrooms, it would serve two purposes. One, it would provide a room or way for my officers to clean up on a scene like that in the middle of the night, 3 o'clock in the morning, to get cleaned up and, as well as to get ready for work. But it would also do a dual purpose for the community. And the plan that I have with those bathrooms is the fact of having a door active. Now, oftentimes, hopefully, knock on wood, we don't have frozen pipes this year where the community needs a place to shower and to clean up. By doing it the way that we have, we would be able to have access from the outside for the community to use those showers, shower up when the pipes freeze. It would be, and we would still be able to secure our police department with the plan that I originally have thought up. We don't have an engineer, everybody come in and look at it yet, but from my understanding, it would work and it would be able to be done for a minimal amount of money, which would, which would help the citizens of Red Lodge as well as my officers, I think it would kill two birds with one stone.
James, the other two comments that I had that I wanted to, and then, and then I'll, I promise to shut up and sit back. On page three, I'll use an example. There were still a lot of blanks in the latest copy that we received on Friday, funding source, and to me, ones that are in the past, we ought to be able to fill in those blanks. There was also some things that I thought should be on that list. I don't know if they were omitted because they weren't part of the capital improvements, but I did not see any reference to the solar at the library, which I know is a project we've done recently. And I know we've updated cars in the last several years and I didn't see any reference to that. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
More pages that?
Page three, where it's just talking about the completed projects.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm really huge on calling out your accomplishments. If we've got things we've done, we should, we should make sure people understand them.
Okay.
Well, in the last CIP had three police cars, but we actually got six in that timeframe. So that should be documented somewhere.
I, I don't know that that's correct. Maybe I'm misunderstanding. The last CIP, like from my understanding, I think the, the three that were had were restripped and a lot of people thought that there were six cars purchased, is, am I misunderstanding that?
That's...
There were not six cars purchased from my understanding.
There were three cars purchased before you got here. And then there were three cars purchased when you got here.
Oh, okay, that is, that is true.
Yeah, this, this is going back over a five-year period. So this is not just in the, in the last year.
Okay, thank you, I think you're clarifying that for me.
And like I said, I just, I, I think we oughta, we oughta call out the, the credit where it is. And I have one more, I may have, oh, I remember why, why I forgot it, because it was, it was me talking about the president, so I went to look at it. On the formatting side, I was literally gonna bring my magnifying glass so that I could read these here, because I had to at home. I don't know if there's any way to trim those pages landscape so that they're bigger. And also, they don't correlate with the numbering system. So if you look at those, that's like a second page 22 and a second page 21 that occur right after page 27 and there's some of that that just was rather confusing to try to follow.
Pages numbers don't mess up.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're separate documents and they don't, they don't line up with the, the table of contents. And, and I can share my notes with you, but, but it was specifically the matrices and the, and so page 23 and, I, I can share those with you afterwards, but...
Okay, I think I know what you mean.
And if we can, and if we can make them landscape, they're legible, because I literally had to use a light, I, I know I'm old, but I had to use a lighted magnifying glass to be able to, to read this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Dan.
On page 17, under constructing new swimming pool, there's a line in there that says a new pool could be part of the above indoor recreation center. Which is no longer stated.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Page 17, the last one, constructing new swimming pool, about the middle of the paragraph, there's a line that says a new pool could be part of the above indoor recreation Which the recreation center is not in there anymore.
Page 17?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Last, last...
It looks like this from a distance, if that's what your 17 looks like?
Shoot, I've got the old copy, I didn't see the thing that's changed.
The first line on this page, it's on the page after table five.
I'll just give you this one, it's... Um, the other question that somebody asked me was, how are the priorities in the CIP decided? As in, how, how is it decided what gets done first, second, third?
Well, as a last one, like we did, we, we rated where we thought was first, like the, the Forest Main was the number one on my priority list because of the, the old one breaking so often. And we rated them in that way and then the Hagan Water Line was the number two, even though it didn't happen. But part of it is, as it comes along, what happened, the funding available and what's available, and that's how it worked out for us. We were able to, to secure the loan and do the Forest Main and then when that opportunity came for the Hagan Water Line, which we had had the engineering done, so when that funding come available and we had it ready to go, we were able to secure that half a million dollar grant and move faster on that. And that's kinda how I look at it. When you look at these projects, any one of them is a minimum of a three-year. When you start, if you started the engineering, it's a year of engineering, then you've got a year of financing and getting all the ducks in a row and then, then you get to move forward to what, my deal when we started, when I did it, we did the engineering on the Forest Main, we did the engineering on the Hagan Water Line. We paid for that out of pocket. Then when it comes around to funding, if you, you can count that money towards your matching funds and any grant or anything. But what happens is if you've got that engineering done sitting on your desk and that funding opportunity comes along, you're ahead of the game. And that's how, that's how the Hagan Water Line happened so rapidly than what we had expected. And that's how I look at these, like I said, remember what I, in my book, the storm water system needs really looked at, we've got a lot of I and I that we need to get. It's a, it's a win-win deal. We get that I and I out of that storm, or out of the sanitary system, the cost of our, our, running our treatment plant will be less, plus our rating will go, we'll have, we'll be dumping less volume to the creek, which is gonna bring our cost of, of sampling and all that that goes along with that down. We, we, we treat 45% more water than we need to. And, and so that's why if you put that at the top of the list, that it's gonna be a win-win down. And that's, that's kinda how, as, as that one we had in 2015, moved, different things moved ahead of the other because we had the opportunity to fund them and get them done. So that's, it's a living document. It doesn't, just because they're rated number one, two, three, four, or five, doesn't mean once, you're just gonna get one done first, it's just whatever happens, the way funding itself comes along, what we can do and it's just that, we have a list of the things need done and we can move on it. That one shifted around many times. Like we had over $9 million listed as costing with that Forest Main project and doing the siphon and, and when we did the engineering, we were able to eliminate, you know, $8 million out of that project by doing what we did. And that's why I'm a firm believer in, in getting the engineering on a project done first, having it on your desk, that then you know and you've got a better idea of the real cost. When they do the engineering, there's a whole lot tighter deal to get the, the costs instead of an estimate like they are here. You get the engineering done, you can get a real... You get the engineering done, you can get a real cost value on that project.
Okay, thank you.
As, as another example, I put in for a two hundred and forty thousand dollar grant to the Department of Commerce recently for water line replacement. I talked to Jim about what he would like to see done with a large grant. Jim gave me a few options that he thought were good. I talked to the state, um, they gave me some guidance on what they thought we might get funded for. You know, I do know that, from what I've heard, I've heard, there's a lot of competition for that grant, so I became a little less confident that we'll get it at that point. But the Department of Commerce told me to put in for a figure of, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less, and I would be more likely to get that funding. So I found, instead of, um, there was a couple of water line replacements that were bigger. But in the hopes of being realistic and trying to get some money, I, I put in for the two block stretch that was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So sometimes, so the grant funding can help dictate that at times as well.
Thank you.
I, I think, Jim, when we're putting in the, um, the justifications for each of the paragraphs, when we talked about two, we've talked about the impacts on our, our sewer plant and, and water treatment and, and the, you know, in here talks about the material removal and et cetera. I think it's important that we make sure we highlight the public health safety of that, you know, the possibility of cross-contamination between sewer and storm. And I, I, I think there's a lot of people, somebody, somebody, I remember, used the term a long time ago. It's not fancy, it's not sexy to talk about storm water like it is about pools, but, but it, when you start talking about cross-contamination between storm water and sewer, I think that a lot more people will be important. And, and, and it's something that if we don't address, we could end up getting slapped with fines and penalties and all sorts of unexpected things that if we didn't anticipate, it would be, it would be an emergency of our own creation.
And in regards to that water P E R, for that, the grant I put in, I, I had to use language from our nineteen ninety-four water P E R because that's our last one, it's a water P E R. Now, the state might look at it and say, gee, they, they know they've needed to replace this for twenty-five years. It must be in really bad shape, so maybe that's a good thing that it's so old. But those documents are, are very helpful for when we put in the grants.
Any other comments from the table? Public comments? Okay. Any of the CIP? Did have the, uh, recycling committee wanted, they, we had a short agenda, and they wanted to have some public comment.
Yes, um, we're just, uh, wanna tackle the lease. May I approve the bench and hand out a few of these, or?
Only if you don't call it a bench.
Just so you guys have copies, maybe I can have two. Yeah, the recycling center is going really well, we're very happy. We have about five hundred people, estimated five hundred people that are currently using the recycling center, which is pretty awesome. The lease, we don't really have any issues. We didn't hire a lawyer, I know that was the word on the street. And as I explained to the city attorney and the mayor, um, I'm not really excellent at reading legal documents, so we just had someone review it, as well as my, uh, the vice president, Kristen Hovswell. Uh, she has more of a legal mind, just sort of thing, so she reviewed some things. And, uh, so we just had some adjustments that we have requested. So the reason why it hadn't been signed is that, uh, Mr. Larson, Mary Larson and, um, the city attorney and I had had an off-the-record kind of meeting after one of the Red Lodge Business Alliance, uh, meetings. And with everything going on, I think that it just kind of escaped everyone's memory that she was gonna maybe take a look at it and rewrite the hazardous material, uh, section. And that's why we haven't signed it, because we haven't received that yet. But I blame anywhere, we were just kind of maybe lost, lost in the mix, I think. So with that, we have a couple of things that we would love to review. Number two is just the term, uh, is there a reason, where do you guys lay on two years? We were kind of hoping maybe for something a little bit longer, if possible. Yeah, we were hoping for maybe five on the term, if possible.
My two cents and pushback on that would be, and, and, um, and I have leases in my life that are like this too. They're five-year renewable, and I know people that have had them in for sixty and seventy years. So, um, I, I wasn't partying for conversation, but I know there's a lot of things at the state level where two years is a prescribed number. And if I were guessing, I would guess, for instance, that it's probably tied to that.
Okay.
That it's just so, but, but.
But you're just guessing, so if I know what it's tied to.
And, and, and that's a fair statement, but I guess what I'm offering is my thoughts out loud that as long as something can be renewed, it doesn't necessarily scare me that it has to be done more frequently. That would be my two cents.
Okay, is there, Bill, is there a reason for two years?
Rebecca?
Um, honestly, I don't remember if we came up with two years, Gina, but what could be added is to say that it's two years and that it will automatically renew if neither party terminates it.
Okay.
You know, parts of the renewal, that's an option to put in there to give y'all some more.
Longevity.
Thank you, that's the one, longevity. I mean, it could be something like that, and then after two years, if the city, you know, had a reason, they could terminate it. Or if y'all found a better place or something, then you could terminate it.
Okay.
That's, that would totally be up to the council, they want to put that in there, but.
Uh, maybe it's a meet in the middle, I guess just me, this being kind of a new endeavor or something. Three years, maybe, three?
Well, and the example you gave, the, the, the example she gave actually matches. So, so I have, I have a, an airplane hangar in another state, and that's actually what it is. It's a, it's a fifteen with automatically three five-year renewals. So it automatically, you know, so it's, in reality, it's twenty-five, but it's, it's not really. But it's, it's an automatic renewal of two-year every automatic.
How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I understand, I think all those points are well taken and everything, but we're, we're, you know, we've already put some, um, money into the break room, the employee break room, and we're cleaning up the property, we're, um, doing everything we can, or, um, looking at maybe putting in some solar things that the payoff wouldn't even be until like five years. So, um, it just seems like, I mean, a renewable ye, lease that can be terminated is really no different than a month, month lease that can be terminated. You know, it really doesn't really mean anything. So, you know, for, for stability, for the program, it just seems like it makes more sense to give a five-year lease. And, you know, we all know, we're residents of the city, so, you know, we're on both sides of this thing. So, um, you know, it's, it's merely for stability, the program in my mind.
Comments at the table, Diane?
I, yeah, I would have to agree with the recycling group. It's hard to make a long-range plan if you only look in two years out. And I know that they're looking at, uh, some grants for solar panels for that, and some other things, and I, you know, let's give them the benefit of the doubt, and they're.
Well, that, and, and quite frankly, that changes it too. As soon as you throw in that they're gonna be going for grants, we've dealt with this with several things with, as we're working on the, um, the growth policy for the city, there's a lot of times where we use language specifically because it's gonna better facilitate grants. So if you guys are going for grants, that to me would be a compelling reason to put the length longer unless there's a legal reason not to.
Do we have, I thought, if you talk about putting solar panels.
Yeah, and then we're gonna talk about that at the end, we're happy to jump in on that now, that's a, this is a good time for it. It's the same, the same as that grant that the library did, but the city will not be in charge of the grant, the five oh one C of the recycling center.
Because I don't remember, I'll have to go back and look, if we had in here that, um, any additions to the property.
We did, yes, and it would just have to be approved by the city.
Okay.
And I think that that was in a five.
I was thinking of the truth.
Okay.
You know, additionally, we're happy to renegotiate for better terms at any time.
So as it stands with this conversation, we're looking at perhaps a vote for a five-year lease unless legality, um, satisfied.
There's no legality, there's no reason to do two, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever. I honestly don't remember how we came up with two years or even out, but it's up to the council, it's, you know, three to five. But if we do three, I would recommend that automatic renewal files. If we do five, I probably would not put that in there.
Okay, yes, I agree.
Do you have a preference between those two options?
Five.
Can you do just a quick straw poll? I, I, I don't know that, I know that there's public pushback whenever we have contracts that are longer. And so as long as there's a reason, we can answer that, but for a quick straw poll, I'd be okay with five.
I'm good with five. I do realize that we're just saying this tonight.
Absolutely, yeah, so we haven't seen the rest of it.
I was gonna come down on continuity, but the latest contract has come up as far as personnel of the city, and we have been unwilling to extend that longer than two years, so.
And if we have to change it for some reason, we can do that.
I think that this is a.
What, it's always different.
So you're gonna go with five?
Yeah, I suppose, because we can change it.
Yep, Robbie?
And then you're seeing the automatic renewal, and they have to give nobody.
No, a five-year with no water. And then if we would have to end five years and renegotiate, and if everything keeps prospering and going as well as it's been going, just renegotiate, renegotiate some more terms.
That works for you. And it allows a sense of security for you.
Yes, and also I think that, like, the, the grant that we would hopefully get approval to apply for, the, I think that the payback term would be around, for us to make our money back on it would be five years. So, it just, just as far as some things that we're looking on, would be great.
Um, straw poll look like?
So, my opinion.
Four to one, Michael?
Well, I'm being told maybe I'm incorrect, but I don't think I am. We just held tight to our guns with Ms. Beers' contract. We were unwilling to work with her for longer than two years. And it has nothing to do with her, it was just, if the relationship is good, there's no reason to extend any further than that. And if it's bad, well, then you obviously wanna have a way out, either, either party.
It wasn't a property, it was a contract.
It was a, it was.
For labor?
Personnel.
Oh, okay, yeah, so this is, this is just for the property. I mean, I guess that those are, in my mind, two different things, but I'm happy to hear your side further on why they feel that it is in, big labor versus property.
We're still talking about labor for the city and city property, so... A comfort level with contract like, and just consistency. Yeah, well, I, I guess I just, in the private sector, you don't get, you cannot get guaranteed anything, and I would like to see it operate a little more like that.
I, I just should point out that, you know, and, and how long is the bond thing that we just agreed on? How long does that pay back? I mean, we do all sorts of different lengths of term. Maybe for an employment contract, two years is more appropriate, but for a lease, um, especially for recycling, that the community relies on and we, you know, it, it's reasonable in my.
We're happy to have you there as long as it's a good relationship.
I appreciate it.
And I would think that maybe you guys would wanna be able to have the option to get out prior to five years. If it didn't turn out good for you, that's the only way I'm looking at it.
Diane?
We have other long-term leases that are twenty years, twenty-five years. It's, it's not unusual to have a lease that's longer than two years for land use.
And, and there still are, I mean, right after two years, it says, unless sooner terminated and as hereby provided. So there's outs for both parties throughout the contract already as well.
So should we leave it there for a second and move forward, the five-ish?
I think the five-ish.
Five-ish, do, um, do we need it? Do we have it?
This isn't, this is just a practice meeting tonight.
We don't, we don't get the vote here, but we can kind of take a straw poll, like Dave says. Uh, look like four of the members here on the five were in favor of the five, so we'll write it up that way and take it to council.
Okay, perfect, um, excellent.
So this will be up for discussion at the next meeting, and then possibly up for votes at the same meeting.
Yes, I could do that.
Cause, cause we're already running without a contract right now, correct?
Correct, yeah, everyone got this in.
Yes.
Um, perfect, and I apologize, I won't be at that meeting, but, um, cause we're not at it now. Uh, okay, so number eight, for everything perfectly okay. I guess the only thing that I would like to request, um, we're happy doing all the repairs, um, up to, there is a thousand dollars, which I'll get to.
Are you an eight or six?
Roman numeral eight on page three?
Actually, I'm sorry, I wanna back up to six. On page two, please. Uh, the maintenance, we were just wondering, over a thousand dollars, if that was annual or per incident?
Good question. I think it needs to be. Or are y'all gonna tear the building up?
No. I think we're, that, you know, just love that building, you know, it's, it's a leg with it, so. Who'll say the, you know, the garage door goes faulty or something, that, is that a hundred percent us? Is it up to a certain amount? Not much can go wrong, it's, you know, a whole war.
That's a good question.
And, and I almost read that backwards from what I would expect. I would almost think if we're looking at this, anything that's small and under a thousand dollars is your responsibility. If it's bigger than, than it's ours, but am I reading this backwards, or is that what it says?
I think what she's meaning is it gonna be one thousand, one incident that is over a thousand? Or is it gonna be, what if there's a couple of incidences in a year that would be over a thousand in a repair? A door's gonna definitely be over a thousand, easily, um.
What was your intent when you wrote it?
I don't even know if I put that in there, but I think I did, because I had, I think it was highlighted. I probably was looking at a per incident thing. I just hope y'all know.
These assignments going down.
Then we're gonna pick per incident.
I, I know what you, I know what your preference is, thousand dollars for the year.
Like a deductible?
Yeah, just, and it, yeah, like a deductible, and that makes sense.
Like the door, the door's a good example. If it goes out, say it was three thousand to repair, y'all got two of it. Well, we'd take two and y'all pay up to a thousand, is how that would work, so we might need to do a little bit better explanation there.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that together and figure it out.
Yeah.
So it's gonna act like a thousand-dollar deductible per incident?
I guess somewhere in there, if it's just a maintenance deal, or if it's a, if someone were to do, damaged it somehow, is that, I mean, that would fall under your, if you guys did something that damaged it, it wouldn't be fall under a maintenance.
Sure.
That's what it would be.
And that's covered under ten, I believe.
Somebody backed into it, whoever backed into the door, hopefully.
Yeah, we're gonna get for ten in a second, too, and maybe ten should have been before six, because we just need a definition on ten. But before ten, let's go to eight. Um, we're happy to do everything as far as the property goes, um, plowing, mowing, and all of that. For some reason in my head, I feel like the, the weed spraying should be on the city just to keep continuity throughout all of your properties.
Good.
Thank you. Uh, number ten, damage or destruction, page three still? Um, in the event of damage or destruction, I guess this is just a little vague for us as far as, like, is this intentional damage? Is this, uh, vandalism?
Or negligent damage?
Negligent damage, what exactly does this imply?
Like a situation, we don't have tornadoes, well, we do have tornadoes here, but tornado hit the building and blew it away. That's the destruction or damage type.
So natural?
So something big, yeah. So if the building burned to the ground, that's a damage or a destruction situation.
If, if, if a tornado takes it out, we're gonna terminate the lease rather than promising to rebuild the building.
We'd have that option, yeah, if it was something that wasn't economically feasible to rebuild, then y'all get out of the lease, the city's out of it.
Okay.
So.
But there's a.
We're not gonna have a tornado, but we could have a fire.
Sure. Um, but the lease, option of, lease would, option of terminating. Okay, so I guess if we could just put, um, natural disaster or damage, I, I just don't want it to, at some point, maybe read that. My, my point is.
Damage beyond repair, maybe?
Maybe, yeah. I, I guess I'm just. I got interruption.
Disaster repair.
We have zoning language for that, more than fifty percent of destruction from, from fire, natural disaster.
Natural disaster, yeah, just something that, I mean, if, if, you know, an employee or something come, has a, has a moment, I just.
I'll look at his wording and the zoning and make it perfect, and make it fit that issue.
That's it, Chris?
Were y'all good with the, I think the one paragraph that was causing so much trouble?
Oh, yeah, that, that's the whole point over here. Um, so. Um, so, go to.
Number five, I think. I think it's five, or is it?
Yeah.
It's kind of gray on here, cause I think I just highlighted.
Five was okay, it was the.
It was tied.
Which one's the one with the hazardous?
Yeah, I think it was amended to be environmental damage, but it's, you know, it's the same thing, pollution, environmental damage, hazardous waste, it's just, you know, we sure wouldn't permit that, nor, nor did the city when the city's around the center. Nobody's insured for it.
Where's the, what numbers the hazardous waste?
It's, it's Roman numeral five on page two, second paragraph.
Okay, so environmental damage, um, due to hazardous waste, we don't deal with that, there's no reason why anyone would. Um, I, I think that what it comes down to is, uh, no one's gonna be basically at fault and it's gonna be criminal charges, but if we don't know who did it, then who's the liability? You guys don't cover, your insurance doesn't cover it, our insurance doesn't cover it, what do we do?
So as I, as, as I read this now, this specifically calls out that you're only responsible if you caused it.
No, that's not, no, it is if somebody, one of the issues, I know a lot of people just dump stuff over there, drop off a refrigerator or anything. Somebody could drop off a fifty gallon drum of used oil, did I say oil? Um, and say it had a hole in the can, it sits there on weekend, and then it, by the time y'all get there on Wednesday, it's just everywhere. That would be their responsibility to clean up. I know it would be somebody else that caused it, not necessarily their fault, but they would need to clean that up. If it's something that has been there for a while, that's prior to the recycling board taking over the center, then that would be the city's financial responsibility, but we can't go a fifty-fifty share, um, liability of somebody. And that was straight from the insurance company.
Yeah.
And.
So, and that's kind of like the contract with the county, I don't know if y'all remember that, when, um, we moved city court and they were warning us to save liability for people that fell in the county building. And.
Right.
We wouldn't do it, and then our insurance company said, we're not gonna save liability for what somebody else was doing over there. And so that's, this is on the same premise of if somebody connected with the recycling board or some patron set some, or just some person put something out there, we're not gonna clean it up, the recycle center would have to clean it up. Now, if I got to dig it back, say something did happen and they dig down and find something that's been there for a long time, that's our problem. And we would have to clean it up, and that would go back on our insurance, but something since they've been there forward would be their responsibility.
And, and I would expect that you would take reasonable precautions to protect against that, and I would think your insurance company will cover that. Um, and then so I, I wasn't concerned, cause I can see where to extend, this says, we, we see shall pay for the entire cost to remediate and repair any damage he or she caused on the lease premises. And maybe that needs to be caused or allowed to be caused, you know, rather than just, it's you. The only thing that we can't, if, if it's past tense, it's our problem. If it's future tense, it's your problem. I think everybody's on that same page, yes?
Yes.
We just need to make sure we come up with the language that everybody's comfortable states that.
Perfect. And, you know, I don't, we, I'm not hazard of waste, environmental damage, I don't know how to really define it other than getting a little technical, and I didn't want to do that, I just wanted to be understood that if something, somebody did something stupid, not y'all, but somebody just put some big drum of oil up there and we got a problem, that it gets cleaned up, and.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that, just.
And again, I think.
It's not an easy topic. It's not any of these, yeah.
I, you know, I think, I think our intent is that we would work with the city, whatever the contract said, you know, um, and I don't, I mean, it could be a hundred different things that, like you said, can't be defined, but, um, rather than define it, I'd, I'd prefer to just work with the city on it. Cause I mean, you can't tell, you can't tell on that lot what's been there for, it's, it's a, it's a can of worms, but because of many, I'm happy to sign it as it is.
I, I, I think that, I think the takeaway there is that there would be an expectation as you take it on, that you take reasonable precautions, rather than just say, oh, nobody's gonna dump off a refrigerator, well, maybe we better make sure there's a padlock on the door, or maybe, you know, or, I, I, I think that would be the expectation.
Are people still setting stuff outside of the thing?
I think it's only happened twice this whole year, yeah, it's much less than what it was. And if, this is a what if, if it ever happens situation, not necessarily a, it's gonna happen, but cover in, in case it does.
Yes.
You're really only responsible for what's inside.
Exactly, yeah.
And, and, and the other thing is if it ever, anything that goes to court, there's gonna be negligence, gross negligence, if you've made appropriate reasonable efforts.
Correct.
To prevent something from happening that, then that's, like I said, that's when the insurance would kick in, yes, we owned it. Yes, they made reasonable efforts, yes, some doofus still came in and dumped a five gallon bucket of oil on the ground, crawled the fence in the middle of the night, that's, that's when.
And lifted the oil over the fence, that's hardcore.
Which is how.
Hardcore recycling.
But they, and if it's something criminal, that goes on to a whole other level, you know, if they did something, but just somebody taking it and setting it out there and walking out and leaving it, it's not necessarily criminal, so.
Okay, I'm happy.
Cool.
Um, did you guys get the other two things sorted, or we just at the end of the? I think there'll be a time I'd love to invite Robin up to discuss, uh, solar.
Sure.
Is that everything on the ocean?
We're good on the lease?
At least so. Yep, we're good.
Thank you.
So I'm glad that we talked about that first, cause it's a pretty good segue. Um, I've been helping the recycling board apply for the USB grant, um, it's due next Friday, so sort of like Jim mentioned a little bit earlier, priorities change as funding opportunities become available, um, so I can throw some numbers at you. Uh, the whole thing with maybe cost of panels themselves, a structural analysis of the roof to make sure that it can handle about four hundred pounds added, and an education plan as required for the grant, the whole thing would be like seventy-six hundred dollars. Um, and that would offset the entire electricity costs of the center, because it only opened two days a week, so they don't need very much electricity. Um, and it has a ten percent match requirement, so that means that the center would be responsible for about seven hundred and sixty dollars. And that's not something we would ask the city to cover, that would be something the recycling center covered. After the lease is approved, I will come back and ask for approval for the panels to get put up, I don't think it makes sense to ask for approval before the lease is finished. Um, because of kind of what you guys are talking about with longevity, it doesn't make sense for investing panels in a building that you might not be in in two years. Um, but it's, I've worked a little bit with Jody from the library with it, and she's helped me, and I have the entire application from Catherine. Um, so I'm helping them pretty heavily with it, cause I have all of these resources and they're helping me with the education and specifics. But I just wanted to ask, assuming that the lease gets approved and that they're in a stable place, um, would the council approve of putting all the panels up currently? I can't see any reason why not.
Margaret? Warren?
Yeah.
Warren?
Yeah.
Margaret?
I, I was, of, of the one thing.
I know.
Yeah, that's, um, the one thing that you mentioned that I would say pay extra post attention to is when you say, can it handle four hundred pounds? Remember that four hundred pounds is in addition to the six feet of snow that will come in unexpectedly overnight.
Yeah, exactly. The nice thing is I got in touch with the same structural engineer that did the analysis for the library, so he's very familiar with our snow covering feature. Any other questions?
Way to dive in and get your feet wet right off?
I know.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
If there's nobody else, I have a whole list that I need to ask.
I, I, I do too, but are you talking public comment on this issue?
About just public comment?
In general.
In general.
On.
We're not public.
Yeah, we are. Um, so you're talking about public comment on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
So I can ask these questions now?
All right, we have time.
Okay, um, I had somebody contact me and they wanted to know, is there some, like, criteria for snow removal? For flowing streets?
Jim answered that.
Did you get that email?
I got it.
No, see, I, I, I answered the email, it said to return.
Yeah, it was.
Answered to that.
The day after you, you sent it, and so we'll, we'll forward that to you.
Okay, and then we had, uh, this person had, um, I'm sorry, about the streetlights downtown, you know, for Salon?
Yes, Northwest Energy is aware of that and they've been working on it, there's seventy-two ballasts within the stream of lights, and they have to go one by one, they've been working on them periodically, but also in the deal, it's, they're expecting the, the new LED lights to be here within the next couple of weeks, and they're figuring, they, they take all the ballast out, put the, the LEDs, and so it will be back. They're working on it, they're aware of it, but they haven't been able to find, fix the problem at this time.
So they are gonna change it to LED.
They are changing everything on.
In two weeks on Broadway, and Robin, you wanna continue on from there?
Yeah, I got a call from Lisa Perry this morning, and they just sent a press release to Carbon County News.
Right.
So if it doesn't show up this Thursday, it'll be there next Thursday.
Lisa's been working on it really hard for us, and, uh, we've moved up the list quite a bit just because of the lights that we do have. And, uh, so, yeah, they'll be, they'll be working on those during the night, uh, and changing those to LED. The rest of the lights that are in the neighborhoods will be, I believe she said, done by twenty-twenty, didn't she?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
So that was sent out in the same, was that sent out in the same email about the story?
No.
Okay, then I'll make sure that gets up to. Um, has there been any communication at all with the school board, um, concerning the pool?
Uh, we're, I'm waiting for my letter.
Okay.
I will, I will add that I have a couple of informal, excited responses from members of the school board.
Yeah, the, the, when I went to the school board meeting, they said that the first step is for the school board to write a letter to the mayor and the council to officially do something, so we're waiting for that letter. Um, on, uh, the livestream video that was posted to the city's YouTube channel, there was an email that came from Mike Malloy, or a letter that came from the city attorney to Mike Malloy, a lawyer in Helena, and in that, it said there was outside council and a team of investigators looking into that video, is, I'm assuming that that's done.
No, still under investigation.
So. That's interesting, okay. Um, there was a thread of emails a couple of weeks ago concerning the pool, and at some point, it got to be a quorum. There was more people than just two council. Yeah, you were, it's, it, I'll, I'll send it to you, but you, you were in that whole thing. Um. It was, it was about what was going on with the pool. But that needs to be, I asked for that to be in the minutes last time, and so we need to make sure that gets in the minutes this time, but I'll send that whole thing to you. But at some point, they got, people got in it into it. Um, the last one, oh, there was an email thread from Jean Rodman that included all of the council. And that should be put in the minutes, too, cause that's a forum of people. And then number seven, I just want to let, thank James for getting all the resort tax committee manual information up online, so they're out there.
Neil did that, so.
Oh, thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm trying to remember the, the, oh, I remember the Jamie Rodman one, I'm, just a clarification, my understanding is information can be disseminated, city attorney, I'm looking to you to make sure my clarification is good. Um, my understanding is that if information is disseminated to city council and it's informational, we have, we're still good on sunshine laws. It's, if there's response or discussion, trying to remember what the exact wording is, it's basically discussion, conversation, or action, at, is the point that it becomes a quorum.
It was a reply.
I'll give you, what I think a good example is when Lonnie sends all of y'all the agenda in one thing, that's informational, she's not asking for a reply back. Anything that's sent out as a question or something that would make you want to reply, it's gonna create a meeting and a quorum. I don't think it's safe to do, you know, one email to everybody, cause if you'll notice, if I send y'all something, I break it up into groups of threes.
And I do, do it to BCC, so even if somebody did hit reply, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, but the open meeting law does include electronic communication, and so I think your best bet is not to get all six council members in an email. If it's information, like I said, Lonnie's sending y'all the agenda, uh, all the documents with it is a good example of information only, because you don't usually have to reply to that, you're just getting documentation.
And we don't necessarily have control over if somebody from the city sends it to everybody, but I also don't have a downside with publishing it, just to eliminate it, just including it within the minutes.
Yeah, um, I always, I don't know how others do it, I always try to make sure, yeah, I do three and three, so that there is, you know, it's not, so if you do respond back and somebody else responds back, it's gonna be the ones in that chain of the email, and then a whole nother set, just to keep from creating that quorum.
This particular email was sent to all of us by that gentleman, and there was a couple of replies.
Yeah, and hey, you know, that's an individual sending it to y'all, so that's one thing, you know, a, an individual sending you, all six of you, a email. All six of you respond, then you got a problem, but, so if all six of you do, maybe somebody just doesn't, I mean, you need not respond, one thing, I think you and I talked about that, Dave, and there wasn't really a need to respond to that, um, there's a lot of inaccuracies and things in the email regarding the law.
I think if somebody did do and respond all, we should probably just, I would be in favor of including it just to make sure we're.
And it, and it should be, but, um, um, not that this would probably matter that much, but on the basis of council, you don't need to respond to that email. And, um, just because we deal with the individual quite a bit in court, and you don't need to respond to it. And if we, and he tries to point out that our courts are set up wrong and our charters wrong and all that stuff, well, if it is, everybody else in Montana's is too, so. Um, it's just, it just doesn't, that's a, a legal area that I don't think the council needs to respond to.
So.
My point was, is that it was sent to all of us and there was a reply all, so it should become part of the record.
That's, that works for me.
Oh, I didn't know, I think Lonnie had already discussed making sure that it was in units because of the question and the nature of it. But I will not respond to it because I haven't explained so many things to this individual in court numerous times, so it is just, uh, what is it, a red herring, it's just, you know, it's a red herring kind of thing.
Anything else from the table?
If, if, if councilman images done, I had a.
Uh, just.
Okay. Um, the first thing I wanted to do is, um, apologize, there was a few things I was trying to get together to get out to the group that I, prior to today, that I failed to do, I just want to acknowledge and apologize for that. Life happened. One of the things I did want to say that is done, but I don't have a response yet, is I did reach out to Dan Clark. Um, and for the other council people who didn't know it, um, city employees' email addresses have changed, so I got a kickback from, from Jim's. Um, so that, that has changed, um, but specifically that question was, um, Mike and I had talked about, um, the conversations with Jim, and that we had understood we were pursuing stormwater as a, like a line item on a utility bill that would show up monthly as opposed to an annual assessment. Um, as of last time I checked, I had not gotten a response back from him yet, but, so that is pursuing. Um, the other thing that if I had thought in advance, um, I would have shared for discussion at this meeting, but we can do with discussion at the next and then action at the next. The planning board did address, you all recall, there was an incident, or a, an area up in the Spires where there is an overlying zoning restriction area. Um, and it basically forced people to build against the side lot lines, um, but there wasn't, um, accommodations to allow easement, so that you could work on the side of your house, and so as soon as somebody got mad at somebody, you couldn't paint the side of your house or finish your house or anything like that. Um, that came before the planning board, it was modified rather than completely removing that overlay. We just dropped the one specific, or amended the one specific clause about the zeros. So it will go for public notice prior to the next meeting, cause there will be another public hearing, so that'll be the second public hearing. Um, but I just wanted to kind of give everybody a heads up on that, that it's made it through the first step of the planning board and answer any questions, and James is here, if, if anybody has questions or if he wanted to add anything.
Um, I'll just add that, yeah, it was originally thought about putting it on the agenda tonight as, um, and then have action at the next meeting. But where the requests had changed so dramatically, I wanted to make sure everybody in the Spires got, uh, their mail notice fifteen days out before it was even discussed at council, because I didn't want, um, a public hearing held after the first council discussion, and people might feel like, council's already heard this, they kind of made up their mind already, so I wanted to make sure everybody out there got their fifteen days. they kind of made up their mind already, so I wanted to make sure everybody out there got their fifteen day notice in the mail before the meeting. So that's why it wasn't on tonight's agenda, otherwise it would have been if if we ended up doing what we said we were have been originally wanted to do, which was eliminate the overlay district and go to the R three zone, we would have had it tonight. But to better notify the residents up there, push the back meeting.
So I know it's our responsibility, but Mayor and Lonnie, if if it comes up and you remember that we forgot to tell you, Bob, I said, I'll tell you.
They've said that the employees' emails all changed, didn't, that get sent out?
Just the public works one.
Oh.
Seems to me like this come up, it was a while ago, but I guess a lot of it didn't get out there, I know. On emails, like, we've got a little deal on it that our email has been changed and we send out with our, what we do.
I think it was sent out to Forward, so people could send to that one for a while, your old one and then went forward, well, that one, I think finally been done and forwarding, so that's probably why.
Do we, yeah, do we know how many of them have changed, is it literally just this?
Just Jim.
We used to be, or R L P works at Bresman dot net, now we're R L P works at cityofbradlocke.com, so we're in the same.
Okay, I thought you said everybody's.
I I did, but I understood, I I didn't understand it was the same, oh, my bad.
Robin?
Jim, that storm grain that I was asking about earlier, um, a neighbor and I were looking at it this afternoon and were concerned, like a a smaller car with not much clearance, if they happen to drive over it, they might get stuck. Tired, I don't know.
I told you we got this up, we're gonna raise those up, the ones that are deep like that up, they're gonna, we've got these. We ordered this stuff and it came in, we're gonna raise them up on our next opportunity of doing so.
Would it need to be marked up until then?
No.
Okay, okay.
It'll only be the first car that drops in there, everybody else will be fine.
And it's only whoever dug it up. Anything else from the table?
I'm sorry.
Any other public comment? Shall we call it?
Yes.